I'm so sorry.
You're fine.
My name is Dr. Kay Siebler. I am the de facto coordinator of the Let Lincoln Vote Anti-Discrimination Initiative Volunteers. We are here today to present to you our verified voter signatures for meeting the requirements in the city code. I'm gonna talk a few minutes about our process, and I please ask for grace. I know that there's a five-minute rule. We just don't want people cycling up here rather than have three or four people take the microphone. I'm just gonna speak a little bit longer than five minutes, and I want that grace. There are only gonna be two speakers after me. We are not going to cycle up to the microphone. There is only two speakers after me. Marie Barrett, who is a 20-year Navy veteran and a disabled veteran, and the mother of a child with disabilities is going to speak. And Amos Sabatka, who is a trans man in our community and a civil servant, is going to speak. So I just wanted to take a couple of minutes to talk about the process because there's a lot of misinformation out there regarding what happened with this initiative. So when the city council voted in June to affirm the Bigotry of the Nebraska Family Alliance, we kicked into action. And our first stop was the Lancaster County Election Commission, and we talked to Dave Shively. Dave Shively said, "You need information on a municipal initiative? Go see the city clerk." They forwarded, he forwarded us to the city clerk's office, and we engaged with the city clerk's employees, including Mr. Christie. Everybody in the city clerk's office was amazing. They are conscientious and dedicated public servants, and they gave us a lot of good information. Mr. Christie forwarded us the link to the section of the municipal code that governs Lincoln municipal initiatives. But that's not the only place we went. We also went to the Secretary of State's election office, and the Secretary of State election office said to us, "You must go to the city clerk's office." We, Lincoln is a charter city. The state election office does not govern the initiatives for charter cities. That is the city clerk's office. So we heard from two people, Dave Shively and the representatives at the Secretary of State election office, that it was the Lincoln Municipal Code that was governing this process for us. We dove into the municipal code. There were only two things in the municipal code that addressed petition forms and the actions of petitions. One is that you have to have on your petition form this paragraph right here, and that is in the municipal code, and we made sure to have that on our petition forms. The other rule regarding initiatives in Lincoln, Nebraska, is you have to make sure that every single one of your petitioners is in fact a Lincoln voter, and we made sure that that was true. We hit the round running. We were all volunteers circulating petitions throughout the city, sweating into our petition sheets, approaching voters. Parks, restaurants, music events. Anyway, about three weeks left in our initiative, we received a very generous donation from a supporter. And when we did that, we decided that we were going to spend that money paying some of our volunteers. We have people in the chambers today who took time off work to circulate petitions. That's how much they cared about anti-discrimination issues. Rosie, who's in the House today, works two jobs. She works nine-to-five downtown, and she works weekends in a grocery store in this city, and she was taking time off work to collect signatures for the anti-discrimination initiative. So for volunteers like Rosie, we gave them a little money the last three weeks of the campaign. And when we did that, we printed new forms for those paid petitioners. We had four of them. Those paid petitioners had new forms, and up in this corner, we wrote, clear and free, so the voter could see it, "Paid petitioner." We didn't have to do that. There's nothing in the city code that says you have to determine the difference between a paid petitioner and a volunteer petitioner. But we did it because we wanted to be honest with the voters. We wanted to be forthright with them, and that we wanted them to see that clearly on the form. Well, you know, we collected over 11,000 signatures. Pretty amazing in that short period of time with nothing but volunteers. And we presented them to the city clerk, and the city clerk then forwarded them to Dave Shively. Dave Shively took one look at our box and said, "No red ink." And he consulted with the county attorney. I think the county attorney did not take a hot minute to ask Mr. Christie what the rules are for municipal initiatives, nor did that county attorney spend the time to talk to the state election officials. Because if he had, he would have heard that the municipal initiatives for a charter city reside in the Lincoln City Code. Well, what now? We are not going away. This group of volunteers, this is a portion of who we are. These people are not going away until this is done. We are gonna speak truth to the bigots, and we are gonna say no. So we went back into the city code. What does the city code say about who verifies the signatures? Oh, it only says the signatures must be verified. I'm an English professor. I love passive verbs. It means that there's no active subject in that sentence, who verifies them. So we got busy one more time. Knockety, knock, knock, knock. Hello, Dave Shively. Can we please have a database of all the registered Lincoln voters? Absolutely. Come on down. Sign a piece of paper, pay $55, here's your jump drive. 170,000 voter records. We solicited the help of very conscientious volunteers, attorneys and retired attorneys, civil servants and retired civil servants, educators and retired educators. 14 of us. We defined a protocol. Here's what you have to do to verify a signature. Put the database on a cloud. Everybody divide up the forms. Get a magnifying glass, caffeinate yourself. Meticulously go through each one of those signatures. Matching name and address. The name and address had to match. There's lots of voters in there who have different addresses. They're Lincoln voters, but they don't match address. People move, young people move particularly. We didn't count them. We only counted the voters whose name and address matched exactly on the form. When that name and address was matched, the verifier bolded it in the database, thereby accounting for duplicates. God has blessed Don Wesley. Signed the initiative three times. We love that level of support. But we only counted him once. We had a way of verifying voters that was initiating integrity and making sure that these voters today that we have verified are actual Lincoln voters. And we have over 9,100. We only needed 8,900. We have plenty, a surfeit amount of registered voters. So today, we are presenting these to you. These are our verified signatures. According to the city code, you now have a month. Once you take these signatures, you have a month. You can choose to act, and you can choose to affirm the amendments that have been languishing for two and a half years, people. To protect active-duty military, to protect veterans, to protect people who are cognitively and developmentally disabled. Yes, to protect LGBTQ people, to add hair discrimination under race, to add tribal affiliation under national origin. These people we talked to, this room, we could fill your evening with stories about the voters we encountered who are discriminated against every day because y'all fell down on your job. We talked to voters, and they said over and over again, "What were they thinking? What were they thinking? What was the city council thinking when they voted to uphold the bigotry of the Nebraska Family Alliance?" And we would say, "Uh-uh. Remember, the women stood strong." Dame Ray Bold, Tammy Ward, Sandra Washington. The women stood strong and said no to the bigots and no to the extremists. It was the men who folded like a house of cards. Voters don't understand that. They do not understand how that could happen in Lincoln, Nebraska, where you have the supermajority on the council, gentlemen. What other time in history do you have five out of... One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, six out of seven seats on the city council, and you can't get this done with a mayor who is sympathetic? Mr. Bowers and Mr. Beckus. Elders in the room, can you please rise if you can? If you've been working on this initiative... Look at these people in the eye. You are sitting in your seat because of the work that they have been doing for 40 years. You are allowed the privilege to sit where you sit because these people gave you that power and privilege. And they're looking to you today and saying, "What happened? How can the two out gay men on the council not get this done? Supermajority, sympathetic mayor, what's going on?" Mr. Schopf. I deeply respect you as a civil servant. I do. But I was sitting right there. Thank you so much. I was sitting right there in June when you told us that you were taking your power and privilege as an elected official to vote for bigotry and extremism so that we, the good people of Lincoln, the good citizens of Lincoln, could not. You took that away from us. I don't understand the logic of that. I don't think a lot of people understand the logic of that, sir. Here we are today between the bigots and the extremists. And let me tell you a little bit about these extremists. They assaulted us. There's a 72-year-old volunteer in the audience today who was pushed down. Her signed petition sheets torn up because of these extremists. They're not the Nebraska Family Alliance, folks. This is a different group. We had another volunteer who was pushed and manhandled and shoved so much, he nearly lost his footing. His signed petition sheets were destroyed. And in that most vulnerable moment, when he thought that his physical safety was in danger, and it was, somebody took his picture, posted it on social media. Who is he? Where does he live? Where does he work? The subtext? Go get him. I don't know who these people think they are, but they are not leaders. Leaders do not harass and harangue. Leaders do not incite to violence. Leaders do not scream obscenities. Leaders do not attempt to bully and intimidate the good people who are volunteering their summer to circulate an anti-discrimination initiative. Is that who you seek counsel from, Mr. Bowers? Is that who you look towards? Mr. Beckus, for the important, serious policy that is the anti-discrimination amendments? I would hope not. I have one story I wanna tell. But I do wanna say, the referendum, if you had read the referendum, this would have given you an easy out against voting for it because we know the Nebraska Family Alliance people, we know they're haters. We know that they hate LGBTQ people. Did you read this? 30 seconds to read the referendum, and you would have seen that they also hate people with disabilities because they pull out disabilities as well as sexual orientation. Their referendum reads to repeal the code related to the definition of sexual orientation, gender identity. Yes, we know they're bigots. Disability people. These amendments cover cognitive and developmentally disabled people. Right now, the city code only covers a very narrow definition of physical disability. The new amendments cover cognitive and developmental disabilities. We're talking about autism. We're talking about various forms of mental retardation. We're talking about PTSD, ADHD, and serious brain injury. That's what the Nebraska Family Alliance also doesn't want to happen. That level of bigotry is eugenics-level bigotry. That's what you voted to uphold. I'm gonna tell one story. I'm gonna tell one story, and it is about a little boy of Middle Eastern descent. And I was at July Jam, and I had my sign that said, "Sign the Anti-Discrimination Initiative here." Families streaming in, picnic baskets, everything. And I was out there barking. It was a beautiful night. "Please sign, Lincoln voters. Sign the Anti-Discrimination Initiative. Protect active-duty military veterans, cognitive and developmentally disabled people, LGBTQ friends, blah, blah, blah." This little boy came running over to me. He could not have been more than 10. And he said, "My parents are immigrants, so they can't sign. But I'm a citizen, and I can vote." And I said, "Oh, mighty soul. I am so sorry, but you have to be 18 and registered to vote in the United States before you can sign this. But know this, you and I are both working against discrimination. Every time you speak up to a bully, you are fighting discrimination, and together, we are doing the same work, and together, we are making Lincoln a better place." And he shot out his hand. And I took that hand, and he said, "You are a good person. Thank you." And I said, "Ah, will di, ah, will di la. La shokran ala wajib. La shokran ala wajib." My child, my child, don't thank me for what is my duty. It is our duty to fight for the marginalized. It is our duty to fight for the maligned. It is our duty to fight for the people who are most vulnerable in this community. It is the least, the least you can do. It costs you nothing to vote for these amendments, and it means so much to so many. We spent our summer sweating into our petition forms, standing outside the DMV, in the libraries, in the parks, in the music events, doing our duty because it matters, people. And we have come here today to ask you, will you do yours?
Kay, thank you very much. Are there any, the next testifier would like to come forward? Kay, thank you very much. Someone else come forward, and we would...
This is Marie Barrett.
Okay.
And her son, Gregory.
Welcome.
Um, my son's only gonna be up here for a short while.
Okay. Fine.
He didn't know.
All right.
He didn't know I was gonna ask. Okay.
Thank you, Marie.
Forgive me.
You're fine. You are fine.
Okay. Kay, will you take him to the back? Yeah, you have to, a quick second. Is it okay, Gregory? Do you wanna go with me?
Yeah, one second.
Okay.
My son has a rare disability called autogryposis. Most of you have never heard of it, or will never hear of it. Currently, he is one of all the children's in Lincoln Public Schools with this disability. I've had to teach every teacher, every year, every school, every time he went to school, about my son because they wanted to put him in a box. He has a bit of delayed because when he was younger, he couldn't walk, he couldn't talk, he couldn't write, he couldn't hold things. He still cannot hold many things with these arms. This hand is worse than the other. He's had multiple surgeries. He is a child of Shriners. We went to Children's Hospital where they did not know what in the world was wrong with him, went through multiple surgeries trying to help him with his, his physical disability, and they almost bankrupted us.
Marie, thanks. Could you get closer to the microphone? Thanks. Is that possible?
You go. Okay, we'll take you to the back.
Okay. Thank you. I'm, yeah.
You want me to sign this thing?
If, when you're done, you can, and go ahead and... It's okay. Take your time.
He is my last child. He is my fifth. I have three by birth. My two first ones, oh, and let me tell you about me. I'm a Navy vet. 20 years, 31 days with pride. Every day, I would say to this day, "If I could go back in and serve, I would." But I made a promise to my two oldest boys because I was a single mom when I had to make my last duty station decision. And they said, "Mom, I'd like to grow up with some friends from school." So I chose to move to Nebraska, where my sister went to Wesleyan and was still living here, still lives here. I chose to move to Nebraska because within my 16 years at that time, and visiting my sister, visiting other family members, being overseas, which I am actually from overseas. I was born in Jamaica and brought to the United States, and I am a US citizen and proud of it. I told my sister that I was planning on moving to Nebraska. Why? Because of all the countries that I could retire to, all the countries that I've been to, all the cities and states that I have served at or visited. Lincoln, Nebraska was the best of all of them, even going back to my own country. Why? Because they're good people. They don't discriminate. There's always work for you, and there will always be a kind, friendly face saying hi on the street, no matter if they know you or not. I have told that to many people since I've lived here, and they always said the same thing to me. "You should go into politics." I'm sorry. Won't do that. But one of the reasons why I mentioned I have five children is because he is my last of birth. I have one that is from my current husband, who was born with autism, has Asperger's. He is on the spectrum and has Asperger's. That young man was used by his mother, and I am sorry to say this is the truth, in the sense of getting help or sadness from other people so that she could go on and do whatever she wanted to without having to work. When we got full custody of that young man, he was getting Ds and Fs in Scott Middle School. And we worked with him, and he graduated with a 4+ .0 GPA, Presidential Academic Award, perfect attendance. And this is a young man that couldn't look another person in the eye. And now he holds a full-time job for this county, probably in this building. I'm not exactly sure. He lives on his own, pays his own bills, and he has his own vehicle. But if it wasn't for the fact that we worked so hard to make him look normal, he would not have been able to get a job. He would not have been able to get a place of his own. He would have been living with us for the rest of his life because there is no protection for people with disabilities, especially ones that can't look you in the eye when they talk to you. Because you go to an interview, they expect you to look you in the eye and say, "Yes, I'm doing very well. I'm fine. How can I help your company? I will bring up the morale." He would not have been able to do that. We worked very hard with him to get him to that point, with my sister's assistance, who is also an educator or has her degree in special education. So she also helped. But one of the things that I don't understand is how you said it was okay to upgrade the wording, the verbiage. Just verbiage. You're not making any new rules or any new laws. This is already on the books. I couldn't understand it when I heard this. All you're doing is changing the verbiage so that it is more clear, so that those people that need the help can get it because they know there's a piece of paper, there's a statute that says that they can be helped. I am also a disabled veteran. I have seen where disabled veterans, or veterans of any kind, who couldn't make that last payment or whatever, did not get any consideration, or did not get consideration for an apartment because the landlord didn't want them to move in because you never know when they're going to leave. Well, that's with anybody. But that doesn't mean they stop renting to others. They look at veterans differently. They look at active-duty differently. I know this for a fact. As a person who was trying to get an apartment in another state as active-duty, I gave them my information, and they told me that they could not give me the apartment because I could not guarantee that I would be there for a year. I had to go to my commanding officer. Now, I knew the rules. I knew the federal statute that said that we have rights, but most military members don't. National Guards is big in Nebraska. They don't know this. National Guards does not get as much information as an active-duty member does. Why? Because they're only part-time. I am sorry, I don't mean to take up your time, but I don't understand why you can't allow the verbiage of a statute that's already there to be updated. I just don't understand. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Marie. Thank you. The next testifier, please. Come on down, sir.
Madam Chairperson, members of the council, good afternoon. My name is Amos Sabatka, and I am a resident of Lincoln, Nebraska. I am here as a private citizen. The views expressed are my own. Why am I here? This has been an extremely difficult question to answer. I was happily living my life, working behind the scenes with the Fairness Lincoln Group, plugging away, getting the revisions passed, and then working to keep going once the revisions were halted prior to being rescinded. I'm here because I was told during that process, across all media formats and in person, that this, that at this time, the trans community, all of a sudden, wasn't in favor of revisions to Title 11. Well, color me surprised because I'm trans, and I'm for it. Okay? I privately emailed each one of you, expressing my support for Title 11 revisions and my concerns that you were getting one-sided view that did not represent everyone. I received responses from most of you, and I appreciate that. Thank you. Until Lincoln City Council rescinded the Title 11 revisions, I was out, I was not out as a trans man to my employer. I didn't wanna go through that process again. Although I willingly did so in my 20s, I really didn't wanna do it in my 50s. Because, trust me, coming out isn't always a cakewalk, and most of the times, it's unnecessary. I did come out to collect signatures for the Title 11 Initiative petition because someone else decided it was not time for me and other members of the LGBTQA community to receive legal protections. I came out because of the constant threat of losing the few protections I do have. And the direct act of being denied those legal protections, again, was too much. I can't have these rights because, well, it's inconvenient right now. It's not time. I am no stranger to the fight for our civil rights, and from having difficult conversations over the years, I understand deeply the need to be in contact with and have dialogue with each other and those who oppose our cause. However, it's hard to not be frustrated when I'm told Lincoln needs more community conversations. More talk, which in the end, has been to try and convince me why this time is not the right time, instead of what we can do to get this ordinance passed right now. It's hard to not be frustrated when I'm told the trans community is against Title 11. Of the Lincoln's trans individuals I talked to while gathering signatures, my friends and those I hadn't met yet, everyone signed the petition. Of course they did. They also want legal protection. Having them in place has been proven to increase our safety. So let me assure you, there is no consensus among trans Lincolnites in favor of waiting. Yet, for some, it's just not the right time. We need to wait. For the entire LGBTQA-plus community, wait. For everyone who will benefit from extended civil rights protections, wait. It's hard to sit back and wait. Again, it's excruciating and frustrating to talk and not be heard. We talked and acted in 1982. We talked and acted against DOMA in 2000. We talked in 2012, 2017, 2020, and we are still talking in 2022. And still, our marginalized communities do not have the protections they so desperately need. We are so close. And today, we are closer still. Closer to being acknowledged as having the same rights and protections to housing and employment as anyone. Whatever outcome you decide is not in my hands. Whatever outcome you decide is not in my hands. I merely want you to know who I am and why this is so important. So again, why am I here? I'm here because as a transgender person, I have fewer protections than my counterparts in over 300 communities, including Omaha and all of the other Big Ten school communities. I am here, in short, because I exist.
Thank you, Amos, very much. Thank you. Are there other testifiers on this issue? Okay, Kay, thank you. All right. Thank you all for being here this evening. Yes, Councilwoman Raybold.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we take these petitions under consideration.
Would entertain a second. I will second it. Yes, Councilwoman McGinnis.
What do you mean by under consideration?
I would like the opportunity to have some time to consult with our city attorney
Yonti Christie, city attorney, if you could just, I think I heard your question, but if you could restate it.
I'm just wondering, is there any legal legality changes? And if we accept these petitions, are we accepting them as valid petitions? Or...
I didn't...
I know. That's what I'm trying to figure out.
I said to take these and accept these petitions under consideration, maybe clarify it a little bit more after reviewing with our city attorney on what are the next steps.
I think it's fair to say that there are questions about the legality of what is happening. By them bringing petitions and dropping it off to the clerk's office or the city council, I don't have a problem suggesting that the council still has to determine the sufficiency if it goes that route. And I think there are still further deliberations and considerations that need to happen, but I do not believe, and I know that this is inconsistent with what was stated, I do not believe that merely dropping off the petition starts the 30-day clock.
Okay, so we're just going to...
What does "accept" mean?
What do we mean by "accept the petitions"?
Well, I go back to take under consideration the petitions that have been presented to us, so that we could review with our city attorney on the next steps, so, and consult with our attorney, precisely to discuss the next steps.
But the next step would be for them to give them to the city clerk, correct?
I think they've done that. I think they've...
Oh, okay.
I mean, I think whether they hand it to the, there or here, I think it goes, they have presented it to the city clerk, and I think that's what they are trying to do.
Yeah, they're just making sure that they're present in our possession, correct?
And I think it's also fair to say the city clerk doesn't turn away. If someone, if they had done the same thing at the city clerk's office, the city clerk's office would accept the documents as they were brought.
And I just want to add, I don't think any of us are well-versed in what the charter tells us and dictates our next steps, what they should be, and I think it would be a wonderful opportunity to take the time to review with our city attorney on what those next steps can and should be.
Councilman Bowers.
So if I understand correctly, like, your amendment doesn't actually do anything, right? Because, I mean, the petitions were dropped off, we have the city attorney available to look through whatever, this actually doesn't really commit anything, so your amendment doesn't really do anything.
Well, it's... It's not meant to make a decision today on what those next steps are, because I'd like to consult with our city attorney so that he could point out to us what options we have, when does that clock that I heard referred to, when does that clock actually start? Based on some of the items in the charter, but since none of us have had a real big opportunity to review what the charter tells us, it would be nice to be briefed on what our next steps will be.
I'm still...
Go ahead.
I guess I'm still confused on, like, how the end result would be different, even if we didn't do an amendment, right? Because we still have city law available, petitions got dropped off, we're going to check with city law to see, like, what next steps are, and you're right, to get briefed and to, like, figure out, like, what the legality of everything is. So I'm just trying to figure out, like, what's the end result versus doing amendment versus what is the end result of not doing an amendment?
It's a, if I may, it's not an amendment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion.
Yeah, I understand. But from my point of view, if I may, Councilwoman Raybold, it's an official acknowledgement, and as a, sometimes it's appropriate, you can advise us differently to officially accept the petitions. There's no action bound to that, it's just officially accepting them, and we have a motion and a second on the floor.
Call the question.
Okay. We have a question. Councilwoman Beckius has called the question for the vote. Madam Kirk, would you please call the vote to accept as posed by Councilwoman Raybold?
Raybold?
Yes.
Chobe?
No.
Beckius? McGinnis?
No.
Bowers?
No.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion lost, two to four.
They have been handled.
One more testifier.
All right.
So we still did receive the petitions there here? We will evaluate them over the next few days, right?
Oh, I think we're moving on to another topic. So you had your opportunities to discuss, I think, Councilwoman.
Just acknowledging.
Well, we tried to do that formally, and you voted against it.
I think that would have started the clock, yes.
Do we have one more testifier?
Okay, do you want to come on up and we'll start? Okay, I understand. Oh, yeah. Can we get a microphone for her?
Yeah, does he have a microphone up there?
Well, it's short. No, it's good. Oh, yeah, dude. In short, there's a, I mean, state government is what I, there's a lot to get involved with.
Okay. Let me know, Madam Kirk, when you're ready.
Okay. I'm just, my name is Josephine Littwitz. Well, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Go ahead.
And as a non-sis woman, yeah, I can see what there's in the city. Yeah, that's good. Now, this is, I, I, I've tried to call, is it LTU? Is that the Lincoln? And Director McGuire was here, and I don't mean to blindside her, because I was going outside, used the restroom, and I didn't really know who she was. I would have, but the reason why I'm still here is because it's not the fact that I could have probably talked to her and had it fixed, but like with the bus system, you know, the people that fix, you know, I forget specific words sometimes, but the people that are supposed to fix this, I told them a few times, in fact, I actually, the last time I called was when I saw a lady trip and fall, and she, you know, she was about in her 50s, and, you know, she got up pretty good, and it was great, and really, but she kept going. But this is, this is at the very, I should have had a larger picture for scope. I kind of, I don't think anymore, but right to the, what I'm pointing at, that would be stage left, yeah, right there. If you go and then come down, and then go a little further, stage left again, and then, no, that's the other, I'm sorry. And then there's a ramp there, and, and there's five disabled people that live in the building in wheelchairs, and winter's coming, and, you know, snow gets on it, and it becomes with various forms of precipitation in there, it becomes a different story, especially my new chair, as cute as it is, doesn't have the torque as my old one did. And so, you know, I can end up, there's lots of problems that could happen, so we need it fixed now. I don't have to, but it's the reason why I'm still speaking, is because, you know, just like with the bus, you know, the driver, well, I mean, I tried, there's other, you know, to be, this is separate from anything, you know, bus drivers have told, you know, and I'm not trying to bring this up and, you know, use this as a prop, but I've talked to many bus drivers too, and so, and I've taken some pictures. It'd be nice to work with the LTU people, because I have some questions on, on, like, some of the fasteners. As a metallurgist, and I've seen, it could all be kosher, but I don't know that, and when I had an accident, and there's, and if those, those frames are welded on that, that the moorings are attached to, you know, there could be, I thought there could be different ways of doing that based upon the likely of having the most damaging accident, which I think, I'm not worried about the bus driver, I'm worried, for example, about a car pulling in front of the bus driver, and then that, and it's stopping and then hitting, and especially, you know, because, so the way that some of those mooring anchors to the moorings face is important, because I think particularly in the direction where that's going to stop you going to the front of the bus, to the bow, you know, and so, you know, because somebody hits you from behind, unless it's another bus, it's probably not going to be too bad, I don't know, got to find out. And then side accidents, well, you know, whatever. But, and also, this reminds me of, you know, we're required right now to face forward in the bus, and based upon the accident that's going to cause the most harm, I think, we could have people look at this, we should be facing towards the back of the bus, you know, where the cool people are smoking, anyway. But we should face back there, because if you have to stop quick, as I see it, the most likely chance of harm, then, and it's easier to get in too, it's not as easy to get out. And so, you know, I don't know, I have other things to say about the, you know, about the handicapped, I will do it, because I just, I should have come here, you know, because they would have listened to some things, I know, but then when it happens a couple times, you just, you just quit.
One minute?
Yeah. So we need this fixed, and the reason why I'm doing it is because even though it could be, we could prove the department now, that's what, the boat, you know, whatever, that's what has to be done. So the fact that I'm addressing the current situation, because apparently the protocols were exhausted to do it the right way. So here we go, and then we'll see how many days it takes. This is Granger Building, in front of the Granger Building, if you know what that is, 105 or H Street. So anyway, it'd be nice, because we have five people in wheelchairs, and winter's coming up, you know, I, I don't think I'm whining. I think if we could have this done, like, tomorrow or the next day, or, you know, by the end of the week, that'd be great. And that's, I've got lots of, I'm going to be here all the time, because I've got legitimate stuff, so we needed to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Josephine, very much. Thanks for being patient today. All right.
I'm going to speak first sometimes, because I just got to go home.
Okay. We can do that. All right. Thank you.
There.
You too. You as well.
I might be too young today, but I guess I'm too old to rock and roll, you know?
You did great. Are there others present that would like to testify this afternoon? Is there anyone else present that would like to testify this afternoon? Ma'am, are you good? Are you, are you planning to testify this? Okay. No? Okay. All right.
A move will adjourn.
Second? Whoops, I can't second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn. Madam Kirk, could you please call the roll?
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Chobe?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
We are adjourned.